Good evening. My name is Kirsten Choomey and I am with the League of Women Voters of Brooklyn Park, Osseo, and Maple Grove. On behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to welcome you to the Candidates Forum this evening. The League of Women Voters is an organization that is nonpartisan and volunteer-based. It is organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While the LWV members do study and take stands on issues, we do not endorse nor support political parties nor candidates. The LWV does encourage its members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. However, the views expressed in this forum are those of the individual candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. By sponsoring this forum this evening, the League provides an opportunity for citizen participation and exposure to the candidates, but again, does not provide an endorsement of any kind. All viable candidates have been invited to participate this evening. We have one who is out ill and followed safety guidelines with flu-like symptoms, and we wish her and her family the best. Tonight, we are here for the City of Maple Grove City Council, and there are two seats available. You have six candidates to choose from. In tonight's forum, the candidates will start with five of the six questions they received in advance, in which they have one minute to respond. Then our candidates will have 45 seconds to respond to the questions that are coming in and have come in via email. Finally, they will be given one minute for the final question, that is your final statements. Candidates, the League would like to request that you refrain from making any personal attacks on your fellow candidates. Due to the pandemic, to keep everyone safe, we have no in-person audience for this forum or any others that we are conducting this year. We have been posting email addresses to which questions may be sent. During this live broadcast, your questions may be sent to candidateforums@twinwest.com. Our screeners are here making sure the questions are relevant to all candidates in this forum and are not in any way a personal attack towards any of our candidates. I'd like to take this moment to point out my timekeepers for this evening. Give a wave. They will show you when you have 15 seconds to finish your statements, and then they will show you when your time has expired. Please finish your sentence at that time, as I will be directing the next speaker's turn. All right. This evening, we have Ms. Kristi Barnett, Ms. Judy Hansen, Ms. Hawanya Hopson. Hawanya, oh, there is a Y there, my apologies. Bad writing. Kristi Janigo, and Ms. Sherlin LaChapelle. And again, Corinna, I'm not going to get her name right. No one gets mine right either, it's okay. She is out sick, and we wish her, again, wish her the best. All right, let's start with the first question that you received in advance. Please tell us about your background and previous city involvement that support your candidacy for this position. Our first responder is Ms. Barnett.
Hi, my name's Kristi Barnett, and I was elected to the City Council in 2016. I serve on the Citizens Advisory Committee as the council liaison, and I serve as the Suburban Transit Authority liaison, and I also serve on the Center for Innovation and the Arts Council as a council member. I am a 16-year resident, and I live on Weaver Lake. I believe that community service is really important, and that started probably back in junior high as a candy striper, and ever since then, I have been very involved in my community. I'm a member of the Maple Grove Lions and was recently elected to the Board of Directors. I am also an active member of CROSS. Just today, I was volunteering with our police and fire department as they collected donations for CROSS services. In fact, I'd like to make a little plug that they are doing a toy drive all of November instead of their one day. They wanted me to make sure to point that out, so. I'm also a member of the Junior League of Minneapolis and have been active some years more than others, but since 2002. I am a former member of the Weaver Lake Conservation Association Board of Directors, and I used to coach high school debate at Park Center, which is a 279 school district high school, as well as at Benild St. Margaret. I'm a University of Minnesota graduate, both for my undergrad and graduate degree. I believe that my service to Maple Grove, as well as to the Twin Cities at large, makes me a qualified candidate, as well as the last four years as a member of the Maple Grove City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hansen?
Serving the past five years gives me both the knowledge, the experience, to understand the issues that face Maple Grove related to budget, policy, development, and providing the best city services. I've served on the Citizens Advisory Committee for five years, actually, six years, and I'm a graduate of the Maple Grove Citizens Police Academy. I also am the City Council Liaison to the Maple Grove Arbor Committee and have done so for the last five years. I'm a parent of three children who attend Maple Grove schools and participated in sports. I was a Sunday School teacher, a Special Olympics coach, and a five-time polar plunger. I'm also an Assistant City Attorney for the City of St. Paul, and I've done so for 30 years. I'm a 30-year resident of Maple Grove, so I've seen a lot of change in Maple Grove over the last 30 years. My experience as a volunteer and my experience as a city attorney in St. Paul gives me a lot of knowledge on all of the issues that face cities, so I hope that you will vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hopson?
Thank you. I'm Hawanya Hopson, and I grew up in the city of Chicago, and what brought me to the Twin Cities is the University of Minnesota. I attended the University of Minnesota on a full academic scholarship there, and I did meet my husband, who is from Minneapolis. We've been married for 19 years, and we have three children, two of whom are currently still in the Maple Grove school districts. I have lived in Maple Grove for the last 13 years. I'm a consultant with Willis Towers Watson Benefits, and I am a licensed insurance producer. So with my work background, it's kind of led me to the City Council, especially with the unrest that we had in the nation this year. I am really interested in making a change, bringing a different perspective to the community, while ensuring to maintain our public safety, our education, which is also key to me, especially having children in the school system, and ensure that all the families of Maple Grove are represented. And so, really, that's why I'm here, just for a change, bringing a different perspective, and I'm really excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janigo?
I'm Kristi Janigo, and I joined the U.S. Army and shipped off to basic training two weeks after the terrorist attacks on 9/11/2001, and it is with this service mindset that I'm seeking public office. I'm a product designer with my whole career, working for Minnesota-based companies. I earned a PhD from the University of Minnesota. My husband and I bought our home in Maple Grove in 2016. Owning a home inspired me to become involved. In 2017, I completed the Citizens Police Academy course to gain greater empathy for a sibling who works in law enforcement, and I experienced firsthand how the Maple Grove Police Department operates. I served for two years on the Maple Grove Arbor Committee, becoming especially passionate about the Maple Grove preservation area. I am a member of Maple Grove Lutheran Church and occasionally serve as assisting minister. I'm Kristi Janigo, and I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you. And Ms. LaChapelle?
Hello. My name is Sherlin LaChapelle. I'm a nurse practitioner. I've lived in Maple Grove since 1983. Honeywell brought us here, my husband, ex-husband, a robotics engineer. The University of Minnesota brought me here, nurse practitioner, worked on the surgical ICU. My involvement, I was involved in District 279's Multicultural Gender Fair Disability-Aware Committee since its inception, but the majority, as well as being Cub Scout Den Leader, but the majority of my volunteerism was more international, along with the Minneapolis Firefighters and Abbott Northwestern, where we went to Kenya, Eldoret, Kenya, to do disaster training and life-saving, other life-saving things, including opening up clinics. I'm on the Attorney General's Drug Pricing Task Force, and we have lowered the prices of insulin, Epi, epinephrine, and other drugs. I'm on Solid Grounds Board of Directors, and we are responsible for providing housing to homeless families and their children. I just got off of the Hennepin County Juvenile Diversion Alternative Initiatives Committee with Judge Katherine Quentin, and I've worked and volunteered with Habitat for Humanity, building houses around the metro area, and I sit on several committees with the Minnesota Department of Health. So I see my role as a more expansive role. Maple Grove is one diamond in a great state, but I want to look at things collectively and holistically, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you. I'm here to serve.
Thank you. Just make sure that the microphone is in your face. If you turn a lot, people can't hear.
Oh, thank you.
I think Hawanya had a little bit of, there we go. Our next question now, my chart goes all over the place now, so just letting you know. What are the most critical issues facing the city of Maple Grove over the next several years, and what policies will you support or initiate if elected to address these challenges? Our first responder will be Ms. LaChapelle.
Well, Maple Grove is a wonderful city, but one of the things I see, I'd like to see it more diverse as far as in the management area. We have a great community of diverse individuals, and over the years since I've been living here, it's become more and more diverse, and it's important that the city be more representative of the people who live there. I'd also like to see supportive training for the police as far as anti-bias training and training in de-escalation techniques. I feel that these will protect the police as well as the citizens. I'd like to see social workers added as support for non-911 calls, because this is very important since there are many mental ill calls that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett?
I believe our greatest challenge right now is our economic development area. Between the pandemic and the changing landscape of retail, we have to make sure that this area is well protected because it's going to have a lasting effect on our business. Main Street is 20 years old, as well as our greater business area needs attention. We need to stay on the cutting edge so that we maintain being a destination city. Luckily, we have a great community and economic development team, both of them live in Maple Grove, so as residents, they have a special view while looking at it. They're in the area and meeting with management and owners, and they have a very personal touch when making decisions about Maple Grove. Main Street is getting a refresh and will be getting a makeover, so that will definitely be help maintain and attract new businesses, as well as this past year, we've given out lots of small business grants that are forgivable that will help the business area as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janigo?
The main issues I see from Maple Grove are affordable housing, workforce growth in our city, and public safety for all. I support incentivizing developers to build homes suitable for first-time homebuyers, young families, and seniors. I support expansion of the city's Scattered Site Housing Program and the Temporary Affordable Housing Trust Fund to help people in crisis due to the pandemic. I also encourage growth of careers, jobs, industry, and small businesses that would support people living here for the long term. We should attract more small businesses owned by Black, Indigenous, and people of color to our community, and hire more BIPOC individuals to our city staff and police force. Only 14% of our police officers live in Maple Grove, and I'd like to give them a sign-on benefit or monthly benefit to incentivize them if they choose to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hansen?
COVID-19 and its impact to our businesses is very critical, even though it's what we're going through right now, but it will impact us for years. We've had business closures, we have vacancies, and there's been a dramatic, well, we also have vacancies because of the dramatic shift in online purchasing. So I would support policies that support our businesses, our families, and our schools to keep our community thriving. I would also support policies for securing financing for the expansion of 610, which the city has supported and worked towards for the last 30 years. Policies that support applying for federal and state funding grants for the completion of 610, because that's kind of the next place where we're developing. Insisting on sufficient infrastructure prior to continued build-out and development for the flow of traffic and calming of traffic for residents. Thank you.
Ms. Hopson?
I think the issues that face Maple Grove are definitely some of the motivating factors that bring me here, and I think Ms. LaChapelle and Kristi has definitely touched on them. My focus would definitely be with public safety. I am an advocate for police officers, however they need training. We speak about officers, 14% live in Maple Grove, but then what about the people of color in the officers of Maple Grove? We need to bring more of that. I believe we may have one person of color on the Maple Grove force. Another critical issue that I think we need to face, again, are the small businesses. We have to bring business, and we have to have our businesses look like our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. Many services the city offers have been altered due to the COVID-19 pandemic restrictions. What long-term effects do you think the pandemic will have on these services and city's relationship with its residents? First responder is Ms. Hopson again.
So COVID is really throws a wrench for all of us, but I do believe Americans and specifically Maple Grove residents are pretty resilient. I think we've done a great job, but we need more work. We need more leadership. Our schools need more funding to protect our teachers and to protect our students. Our government buildings, our offices, things like that in the businesses. We need to bring awareness, and we need to ensure that we are pushing what science drives us to do here in Maple Grove with this pandemic. We will get past it, but there are things that need to be put in place, and resources just have to be available to the people of the community.
Thank you. Ms. Janigo?
COVID-19 has amplified and laid bare where we are vulnerable, but I also think the pandemic has brought city services closer to residents. The city has had to be stewards of federal, state, and county money from the CARES Act, but also use some of its own money to help small businesses, individuals, and families struggling to survive. For the long term, there are processes and infrastructures set up in these emergency times that we could maintain and refine. We've set up an Affordable Housing Trust Fund to issue money to CROSS for rental and food assistance. The city has a track record of saving little by little over many years for various projects, and over time, a trust fund could become a significant way to help our residents most in need. Thank you.
Ms. Hansen?
Our parks and recreation programs have taken the biggest hit because of COVID-19, because of the need of social distancing. Those programs provide a source of revenue for the city, and its impact is felt now and into the foreseeable, unforeseeable future. The city recognizes that these programs provide the health of our entire community in creative ways to offer recreational opportunities. Initially, our Maple Grove transit system was halted for a while because people continued to work from home. The city will need to continue to reevaluate those services to allow people to get to work. The other impact is there's been a delay on making certain capital improvements, hiring and purchases of equipment. The city is closely monitoring its budget to make sure that we provide the best services to our residents.
Thank you. Ms. LaChapelle?
Well, COVID-19 has, again, as you said, laid bare the realities of what's really important, and we need a more equitable system so that all residents get their needs met. As a nurse practitioner, I understand that this situation with COVID will not end soon. We will comport ourselves and do businesses differently. The new normal will be based on safety and supporting our businesses and communities in new and different ways. COVID-19 is a killer and must be considered as such. We will develop procedures as the situation evolves. There's no one right answer. This is a monster that we don't understand, we don't know what and how it affects persons, so it's very important that we invest in measures to keep everyone safe, as well as educated. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Barnett?
Besides park and rec, as Councilmember Hansen spoke about, our transit center and its services has taken probably the biggest hit. We went from 3,300 rides daily to about 175 rides. Those commuters are just not going downtown anymore, and the likelihood that they're going to go back anytime soon is pretty small. Maybe it's because their jobs have been eliminated, maybe it's because their jobs have decided that they're going to stay at home, or maybe it's because they fear riding the bus. The reality is, is we need to decide what we're going to do about that, because Maple Grove provides its own transit. So one of the options that we can look at is going from a commuter service to a round-town service, using Arbor Lakes as a hub to provide services, taking people from local places around Maple Grove and providing the people directly to their jobs from around Maple Grove so that they have transportation, sort of like my ride, but on a bigger scale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. The city of Maple Grove is about 60% developed. What types of future development would you like to see the city approve in the next five to 10 years? Our first responder is Ms. Janigo.
We already have just about every type of restaurant and retail chain here. However, someone I spoke to pointed out we lack a Popeyes, and I've heard from several people that we need a curling club. In seriousness, I already mentioned I want to see growth in small, local businesses, so additional commercial developments with smaller spaces to keep overhead costs low, placement in proximity to residential neighborhoods, and prominent storefronts to drive traffic. We're going to need more schools and expansion to some of our existing schools to manage overcapacity problems. I want to see more medium-to-low-density neighborhoods integrated with parks and green spaces. We will need to ensure appropriate investment in our roads and infrastructure, as well as expand intracity mass transit options. Thank you.
Ms. LaChapelle?
Yes. I'd like some new housing options. I like something called co-housing, and that's a housing model designed to foster connection within communities, especially for people like me who are considered elder. It enables a connection between young people and the elder community, as well as those single parents who might need the advice of a grandparent. But I'd also like to see, again, more affordable housing or housing that fits the needs of every person in this community, as well as more parks. But I'd also like to see a little more training. I'd like to see what they would call technical high schools or tech programs added to the high schools, so that a more vocational training could be obtained while in school, so that when they finish, they're prepared to go to work. Thank you.
Ms. Barnett?
The northwest area of Maple Grove still is working on development. We put a moratorium on apartments so that in about May of 2020, and with that, we asked for a housing study that should be completed late this year or early next year. With that housing study, we'll see what kind of needs there are and market trends. Currently, we have been working with District 279, talking about where we are with residential, because it's not the City Council that actually builds the schools or makes those determinations, but the school district that decides on the schools. But we have been in communication with them so that they can start planning for the schools that they need to support the city. In terms of commercial, we agree that we don't need any more retail, but what we do need are good, solid businesses with big campuses that bring in high-paying jobs that could go near the gravel mining and in the 610 commercial area.
Thank you. Ms. Hopson?
I think what we need for development is first to start with our youth. Our youth have really been impacted by this pandemic, and which falls into us, our parents. So we have the community center, but, you know, it's not open to allow, to support this pandemic. So I think we need to do things where parents create opportunities or communities, whether it's skating rinks, things like that, that could bring our youth together, especially in times like this. Our youth is our future, and we don't want them to be impacted or reverting, depressed. Mental illness is huge, especially during times like this, so I think focusing on things like that for the Maple Grove community will really, really enhance and help us through some of these difficult times.
Thank you. And Ms. Hansen?
I agree with many of the statements that have already been said, including the fact that the council has a moratorium currently on multifamily housing to give us a sense to consider what land use we need. But we have considered a corporate campus on the gravel mining area that would bring in good and high-paying jobs. We've also looked at alternative workspaces that include a variety of services that are supportive of working families that involve our seniors as mentors, age-in-place and affordable housing options, outdoor green spaces, a continued connection of the trail system, and spaces for arts and entertainment venues.
Thank you. Our next question. Local businesses are taxpayers but not often voting residents. In what way will you reach out to best understand their needs and provide for fair representation in city council decision-making? Please share your thoughts. First responder is Ms. Hansen.
One of the best decisions that the council made this last year was to hire an experienced economic development manager who's been instrumental in outreach to our local businesses, especially during this pandemic crisis, which has dramatically impacted our business community. He developed a creative financial solution to assist small businesses with loans and grants to keep them afloat. Maple Grove also has an open-to-business program that assists entrepreneurs and small businesses to succeed by providing one-on-one counseling on developing business plans, operational analysis, cash flow, and financial planning. Also, Maple Grove works closely with Greater MSP, and DEED, and the Chambers of Commerce for Hennepin County to help employees with issues such as recruitment and retention of employees.
Thank you. Ms. Hopson?
I think in order to get to those local businesses that are taxpayers, we have to hit the pavement. I'm a people person. I want to understand what the local businesses need, so I'm going to go to them and speak to them. I'll find the time. I think in addition to that, we also need to get to those entrepreneurs who are interested in getting into Maple Grove but don't know how. We have to create those opportunities for them, because, again, our businesses need to look the exact way our community does, and that's not the case right now. And so, the best way to go about finding out about these business owners is to speak to them, make ourselves available, attend the commerce meetings and things like that, and I think we will be able to bring what we need here to Maple Grove.
Thank you. Ms. LaChapelle?
Yes, excuse me. I believe businesses are vital to any community and especially to this city as well. I, again, as well, want to reach out to our community and businesses, but due to COVID, we'll have to do it a little differently by using Zoom meetings, monthly or regular weekly meetings that will be publicized in our local newspaper and on the city's website, because it's important to hear from the citizens and businesses. Otherwise, how would we know what their needs are? It's important that everyone know that they're listened to. Understanding that every hundred dollars that businesses take in, approximately $45 recirculates back to the community. Businesses actively support the community through philanthropic activities and other donations. Healthy business equals a healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett?
My joke is always with the city council that I go last because I'm the newest council member, and so they always steal my answers. And so, I was going to say exactly what Ms. Councilmember Hansen said, but I will also say this, I'm available, and our residents and our businesses know that. I am a very active member on social media, and I promote a lot of our businesses that way, and I make myself available to them by phone, too. So when our curfews were set because of the activity happening in Minneapolis this past May, I was available to many of our businesses, and they were reaching out. May, I was available to many of our businesses, and they were reaching out to me because they had questions and they had concerns, and I was letting them know what was happening. And it's those relationships that I've been building that is why they know that they can come to me when they have questions. So while they may not be voting, they do have a voice in that way. I go to many, I go to ribbon cuttings all the time. I was just at one today. I go to the chamber meetings. I go to any outreach efforts that I can. So the visibility and availability is what makes them know that they have a voice, even if they aren't voting.
Thank you. Ms. Janigo?
Local businesses are the bedrock of our community, and even if the owners are not residents, chances are they employ our residents. So supporting small businesses is very important to me. I will plan to be in spaces where small businesses are, such as the local chapters of the Business Network International and the Twin West Chambers, to get to know owners and their needs, and I've previously attended virtual meetings for both organizations. I would visit local businesses personally and aim to patronize their goods and services. I'd also like to set up a small business advisory board for just our Maple Grove business owners with bimonthly meetings to discuss current issues and mentoring and educational opportunities to foster success. Establishing one-on-one relationships with business owners is important for city staff and leadership, so owners feel comfortable reaching out with needs. Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to the questions that we've been receiving through emails, both to the Legal Women Voters and also Twin West Chamber of Commerce. So you'll have forty-five seconds to answer these questions. First one is, do you support the city's age-friendly city efforts to date? What do you believe still needs to be done to make the city more age-friendly? First responder is Ms. LaChapelle.
Oh, I do support it. In fact, a very good friend of mine is on the council on aging, and the co-housing model, which, there is a model of this in St. Louis Park, which is working fabulously. So yes, and I would like everybody to look up co-housing. There's a website, you can Google it, and you will find that this type of housing is what's needed here in Maple Grove. It's a plus-plus for all age groups. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Janigo?
Yes, I definitely support age-friendly Maple Grove. Specifically, a lot of seniors I've spoken to on the phone have told me that they're having trouble finding the right kind of housing when they want to downsize. So affordable housing that is fully accessible, meeting ADA requirements that supports aging. Someone also mentioned to me that they wanted to see more senior activities for the active seniors. So someone loves dancing, so they wanted to get together with friends and dance. And still, other residents told me about their Nordic walking activities, so I want to expand activities at the community center for active seniors as well. Thank you.
Ms. Hobson?
I absolutely support aging as well. My parents, I was just speaking with Ms. Hanson, I'm moving my parents from New York to Maple Grove. Now, they're still together, but they are active seniors, and thus, they want to be able to do things. So we do need, everyone deserves to be able to be comfortable and have activities within their community. So, and we do have a large senior presence here in Maple Grove, so absolutely, let's get the seniors on board as well, and they can help and join us.
Ms. Hanson? Button?
I fully support age-friendly Maple Grove, and in fact, we, like people have said, we do have a very active senior group. We see them out walking. We have so many parks and trails that they enjoy, and one of the things that they really enjoy, which is a big thing, is pickleball. So there are many activities that I think we're trying to provide for our seniors, and they actually are the ones taking the lead. So it isn't really just the city doing this. They're actually coming to us and telling us what we can do to help them live a more healthy and thriving life.
And Ms. Barnett?
Absolutely, I support it. Actually, our Maple Grove Lions has been a contributor to that group. One of the things we're definitely looking at in our housing study is senior housing options. Same with our community center master planning that we've been working on the last year. Unfortunately, COVID has derailed some of that, but that is still there. Our park board and our park and rec staff definitely look at all kinds of options for our senior, because we do a lot of programming for them there. I can tell you that personally, we do, as city council members, attend Woodland Mounds Holiday Party. It's the highlight of my year, I tell everybody. It's a senior housing that we, the city, runs, and we are very involved with the seniors in Maple Grove, and we do a lot to support them, and I absolutely support it.
Thank you. Our next question. Maple Grove's 2040 Comp Plan highlights the desire to protect and preserve natural resources within the city. However, key forest preservation areas do not have permanent protections. Would you be open to considering permanent protections on these areas to ensure unique natural resources are preserved? Why or why not? First responder will be Ms. Barnett.
I'm definitely opening, open to exploring that. I do need to learn more about that. I've recently had a conversation with one of the Arbor Chairs. As a council, we are having a workshop coming up about that. It needed to be postponed due to a family emergency of one of the council members. It's something I don't know enough about, but something that I'm definitely open to exploring. I absolutely work to protect our natural resources. In fact, I was the one who asked for our ordinances to be changed to protect our lake shore property and the trees and the bluffs that are, that exist along our lake shore, because people were just cutting down trees and bluffs in our lake shore area that were supposed to be protected. And now that we've changed our ordinances, people cannot, not only will they be penalized, but they'll be financially penalized. So I absolutely am open to considering that. I just don't know enough about what that means.
Ms. LaChapelle?
Yes, I am absolutely in favor of the environment and protecting the environment. I have, in my own yard, have had, it wasn't a fox, but it was some, it was a coyote, and I'm under, and had several foxes in broad daylight, and they're running out of habitat. We're building everywhere, but where are the animals going to go? And the part of the beauty of Maple Grove are our forest, our greenery, Elm Creek Park Reserve, Weaver Lake, all of the beautiful parks. We need our parkland, but the animals also need to be able to coexist with us as well. So we must consider all our inhabitants. They're all important. Thank you.
Ms. Janigo?
So in my PhD studies, I researched sustainability in a wide range of sectors, industry, and public policy domains. I believe our tree preservation area needs to remain undeveloped. I want to protect the quality of our bodies of water, especially the shallower ones, which consistently receive poor ratings. But beyond that, I believe we need to do something about global climate change. I want to see our city add alternative energy sources, such as wind and solar, to the grid, and I would like to see our mass transit options expanded to reduce our carbon footprint. Thank you.
Ms. Hobson?
I absolutely believe in saving the environment and natural resources. You know, the nation itself has changed a lot in just over the last thirty years, and so without protecting our environment, where will we go? It's the same as with our animals. So we absolutely need to look at these, these types of activities, the environment, whether it's with the, the different energy sources, or whether it's our natural resources. Looking into that is extremely important, not just for Maple Grove, but for all of our nation.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson?
Our trees and our green space and our lakes are what attract people to Maple Grove, to work here, to live here, to play here. I'm on the Arbor Committee and have been for five years, and that's the work that we do, is trying to preserve all of the natural spaces. I also was on the Wetlands Task Force several years ago for Maple Grove, and all of those natural spaces and wetlands are so important to our ecosystem. I would be interested in exploring something that goes beyond just the preservation, and we are looking at working with Hennepin County Conservancy, so that there wouldn't be any development in those areas.
Thank you. Next question. Do you feel the city's property taxes are too high? Why or why not? First responder will be Ms. Hanson.
I think some will say that they're too high. In fact, each year, we do operate as a Board of Equalization, and so residents can come in and challenge their property taxes, and so we work with our assessing department, and we review whether or not we're looking at proportionality in their neighborhoods and market. However, over the last five years that myself and Ms. Barnett have been on the council, we have not raised the taxes, and so I think we've done a really good job. I know some of the folks that live around the lakes, their taxes have gone up over the last few years a little bit, and so I think there's some frustration there.
Ms. Barnett?
Well, definitely going to echo what Councilmember Hanson said. Our tax rate is low, and our tax base is strong. I think that what people do get confused about is that some of the taxes they're paying are actually going to the school district and the county, and what they're looking at is their tax bill, and they think that it's going all to the city. What we do offer, though, for the taxes that people do pay is high-quality services, and that's what attracts a lot of people to Maple Grove, is what we do offer. We're a quality service, or quality city with quality services, and sometimes you do have to pay a little bit for what you get. The other thing is, is we are a growing city, and that does cost money, but overall, we keep our budget really low and lean, and we spend a lot of time from, you know, about August to the end of the year, working on that budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LaChapelle?
Well, having lived here over thirty-seven years and watching my taxes grow, I think Maple Grove is worth, worth the amount, and I do understand that a portion goes toward our schools, our roads, and the other thing that makes this a livable city. There are many things that I can complain about, but I don't like paying taxes either, but I find that the taxes I am paying are well worth it. So I'll have to say, I don't feel overtaxed.
Ms. Janigo?
So I've heard from several longtime Maple Grove residents that they feel their property taxes are too high from incremental increases over the years, like Ms. LaChapelle was saying, over the years of incremental increases, it can add up to a lot. So I think we could be creative about ways to fund infrastructure projects with minimal property tax increases or assessments. We can utilize special sales taxes to cover the cost of specific infrastructure projects, and we could utilize motor vehicle fees and fuel taxes to fund roads and public transportation, especially since the price of fuel is so low right now. So I think there are ways that we can be creative and mitigate the impact for residents. Thank you.
Ms. Hobson?
So I'm going to be cliche here, because something that is always certain is death and taxes. And, you know, we can sit here forever and talk about taxes being, I don't like paying taxes either. They tax my income, they tax my food, they tax my, my property, everything is taxed. So I think the key to what I will do is, you know, at the end of the day, taxes are what run our, it runs our city, a portion of our taxes run our cities. And so we will always look at, I will always look at what it takes to ensure that the residents are right, but we're not going to get rid of taxes. We're just not.
I've seen suburban Chicago tax bills. We're fine.
We're fine.
Sorry.
And New York as well.
That was my little insert there. Okay, so we're going to do a fun question now, and that is, and you only get to pick one place, and it doesn't, what is your favorite restaurant to visit, let's say the world is back to normal? Give you a second, and our first responder will be Ms. Hobson.
Well, that's easy for me, and I'm going to give a plug. I am a plant in the Maple Grove TGI Fridays. Now, yes, it's not, it's the American Sports Bar. However, the drink that they have in there, so yes, I like to enjoy a cocktail after our day at work, but the drink, it's a Captain Island Rum Punch. Nobody else makes it. So Maple Grove Fridays, I spend all my tax dollars putting right back into the community.
There you go. Ms. Hanson?
Well, we are the land of chain restaurants, so I wish we did have some other, like mom-and-pop shops that we could pick from, but my favorite is Biagi's, and I love the atmosphere there. I've never been disappointed in the food. I'm glad that they've had curbside takeout, because I've taken advantage of that quite a bit during the pandemic with my family, because you can order larger meals, and it's been a lifesaver some weekends.
There you go. Ms. Barnett?
You're going to get me in trouble with a lot of people here, because I'm not saying certain people.
You'll be okay.
Kyoto. I am a sushi girl, and at the all-you-can-eat, oh, I, yeah. And that doesn't really, because it's all-you-can-eat, the takeout part just doesn't work for me, so I'm dying for a Kyoto.
There you go. Ms. LaChapelle?
I like Three Squares, and Biagi's, too. I was there Saturday. But Three Squares are a regular, and now that the summer's over, they got heaters outside, so I'll have to figure out something I can do in the winter besides just bring it home. But I love them.
Ms. Janigo?
So I was vacillating between Teresa's Maple Grove and Lotus Maple Grove, but I think I'm going to have to go with Lotus, just because when I was a young woman living in downtown Minneapolis, I used to go to the Lotus there with a friend, and a lot of the same employees who served us back then now serve at Maple Grove. So I love seeing the familiar faces, and you can't beat their pho, so I just love that with beef in it, so that's probably my favorite.
See why I do a fun question at these? Okay, back to real stuff. Okay, here we go. What is the, what transportation needs do you feel need to be addressed in this city? Are there specific projects to improve in, in transportation in the city, and what would you like to see get done? First responder will be Ms. Janigo.
In this city, I would like to see more intra-city transportation, so the city has already gone down the path of revamping our transit hub to be more multipurpose and accommodate Uber drivers and various other types of biking and other types of stops, but I'd like to see more stops around the city, and we can probably implement that pretty readily. There are many faith communities, hospitals, and other areas with space that could accommodate a bus stop, so I'd like to see just greater stops and connectivity within the city. Thanks.
Ms. Hobson?
Transportation, I think I have to agree with Kristi. The inner stops in Maple Grove are just not, Maple Grove's really big for getting into downtown, and as we know, our community isn't necessarily leaving to go downtown, and so it's, it's very difficult to do an inner-city transportation thing, but I think it's something that we need to look at, definitely, because our kids, our youth, and our seniors, our active seniors who don't necessarily want to drive, would be likely interested in catching a bus that's a couple of miles away, so.
Ms. Hanson?
I agree with everything that's been said. I think we do need to have better connectivity within the city, so that if there's, you know, sixteen-year-olds who don't have their driver's license yet, they can have the ability to easily get to their jobs. I grew up in North Minneapolis and was able to take the bus all the time, and downtown, that's where I worked, and I think we need to do a better job for our seniors, too, to make sure that they're able to get around, even if it's a last-minute thing. I think they have to still make some appointments ahead of time, so I think as long as we could just, you know, and maybe even connect to other communities as well, so that we can bring jobs in and, you know, bring people out to other communities.
Ms. Barnett?
I think we need to do a better job enforcing our traffic laws, and I think if we do that, it will make our transportation run more smoothly within the city. It's something that I have made the chief aware, that I feel like people run our red lights, and they speed excessively in places that they shouldn't, and we're working on it. It's something we're aware of, and it doesn't necessarily make, provide people with transportation options, but it provides the people who are driving with safer roads, and it's something that, as we discover areas we, of need, we are working on, and so it's something of the city we need to address. Thank you.
I have a follow-up idea to that one after Ms. LaChapelle.
I would like to see more commuter service within the city. As a senior citizen myself, happily sixty-nine years old and very active, it is important that we have options for teenagers and for seniors like me, where maybe hourly, certain areas, the bus would stop there, you know. Appointments are nice, but as we get older, sometimes we don't remember to make that appointment, so if, and we are the first senior-friendly city in the state, so to add on to that, let's have those bus stops so that they're regular. So to add on to that, let's have those bus stops so that they're regular. And then when I want to come out and go to the health club or go get my hair done or go to any restaurant I want, I can.
We know which one. Okay. You brought up a really good follow-up to that point. So there's a lot of drag racing that's happening constantly, even at two o'clock in the morning. What should Maple Grove do about the drag racing? And it's not just on 610. I've read on neighborhood pages, it's going down past like Rush Creek. It's everywhere. So what should Maple Grove do about the excessive amount of drag racing that is happening lately? I'm going to go this way down the order. Ms. Barnett.
So it's actually something that I've been working with chief on. I've already discussed that because it's something I've seen in the Nextdoor app and in the social media, in the Facebook Maple Grove groups. And I hear it myself when I take my dog out at all hours and you can hear it from the different, different areas coming, the noise coming. I, I personally don't know, I'm not a police expert, so I don't know how, how they can address it. But I know that I can be an advocate for our residents in saying that it's a problem. And when I see it being talked about in the social media groups, I can give that information to our police department and give them the points of where they're seeing it in their neighborhoods and say, this is a problem. We need to address it.
Thank you. Ms. Hanson.
I would agree with all of those things. And having been a former prosecutor, it really means stopping the drivers and giving them citations. I mean, it really, it has to hit them in the pocketbook. And speeding, you know, it affects your insurance rates too. So I think that's kind of the only way to deal with it.
Ms. Hopson.
I may be the unicorn of the group and say, if we have drag racing in Maple Grove, then that's a need for maybe a racetrack or something. We may need to give these folks, if we have this drag racing going on, I mean, there's land here. And so I don't know who's drag racing. Is it the teenagers or is it, you know, older men who buy fast cars and women? And maybe they want to, you know, get, open their engines up. And so I, I, I think that that may be something, we have to get them off the streets because it's not safe on the streets. But maybe we give them an alternative versus us just closing it down.
That's an interesting answer. Ms. Janigo.
So on top of the concerns about speeding and traffic, I have spoken with some Maple Grove residents who say that they rarely see police in their part of the city. I believe it was someone from Southwest Maple Grove. So maybe a greater police presence in some of those neighborhoods, which aren't maybe getting quite as much attention as some of the others like Arbor Lakes. But I think we should give more citations and tickets, make them pay. But also I was thinking it would be great in really high traffic areas to have cameras so that we can mail them a ticket for a consequence like that. Thank you.
Christie, that was what I was going to say. Coming from Chicago where we have cameras, gotcha as you speed on and it comes in the mail. And I also like your idea. That's an income source. So a drag racing, you know, my daughter lives in the Carolinas. They've got those drag racing places everywhere. It's really big down there. So yeah, that's an income source. And you don't have to get too close for that, you know? And then they could televise that for COVID, you know, charge for that, pay TV. Yep, I'm for it.
See, women need to solve the world's problems.
See, there you go.
That's all I'm saying. Okay. Sorry dudes. Okay. All right, let's get to, let's see, we'll do one more quick question, then we'll get to the final answers. What is your opinion of Maple Grove Parks and Recreation and how would you support it as a council member? Let's go with, I'm going to switch the order so that we flip it around a little bit. Let's go with Hawania.
I, the parks and recreation in Maple Grove is beautiful. I really have to say that, including the rules that we have for walking your dogs and picking up behind your dogs, having spots for them to drop it off. Coming from the city of Chicago, we do not have the beautiful parks and lands the way that it is here in, in Maple Grove. And so I definitely think that we need to maintain that. And, and whatever's happening, I think it's being done right, in my opinion.
Thank you. Ms. Barnett.
I just love our, our parks and our, and our natural resources. I believe that the council is good partners with our park board. We have a solid relationship. We work well together. I support all of their efforts, anything to make our parks a better place. I, I'm known as a council member who walks the little black dog, black and white dog all over the city. Anywhere I go, they say, I know you, I know that dog because I use them and I promote them. I am endorsed by one of our park board members publicly because of our, my support of their efforts and in, in supporting everything that they do because I think that it's vital to our community.
Ms. Janigo.
I think our parks and recs are the best feature of our city. Specifically, I personally love the Veterans Memorial as a veteran myself. I've heard from some residents though, that some of our bike trails need repairs. So I thought it'd be great to send someone out with an iPad to take photos of locations that need repairs, kind of like how they're doing with various city trees that are not doing so great. And I think we also need more connectivity with our bike trails around the city. But I fully support funding our parks and rec and hopefully also getting a curling club in our city and the baseball at Gleason Field up and running. Thank you.
Ms. Hanson.
I agree that our parks and rec is our best feature in Maple Grove. And it isn't just our parks, but also the recreational programs. Not every kid can afford to join some of these leagues and so that offers families an alternative. And so we have so many programs for our youth, our teens, our, our seniors and our families. And I think that's just really the fabric and the health of a community. And during COVID, while we had to close a lot of those programs, we thought of creative ways to still engage people because it's so tough when you're just in your home. And so the encouragement was for people to get out and enjoy those parks as part of their health.
And Ms. LaChapelle.
I love Maple Grove Parks. I have ridden on every bike trail and as they went under the expressway there to collect, connect Fish Lake and Rice Lake, I love that too. And I agree, we need more activities for our youth. But many youth may not be in the position to join the Community Rec Center. My husband coached two basketball and two baseball teams the whole time our sons were growing up here. And yes, you had to pay. We need to have scholarships for that and scholarships for the community center. As we know, idle, idle kids get into a little bit of mischief. So everyone deserves to have a chance at having fun and a full life and enjoying all that we have. It's for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to move to our closing question in which you have a minute to say what you need to say before election day. In summary, how would you like to, how do you intend to best serve this city and move it forward? We'll go in the reverse order in which we started. So we have Sherlin LaChapelle.
Okay, great. I plan to always listen and to remain thoughtful and considerate of the needs of families and citizens as well as our businesses while attempting to balance those needs and create a more livable community for all. Listening sessions are very important. And yes, I'm a people person. As a nurse, I'm hands-on. And I'm already out, well, everybody that knows me know I talk to everybody. And Three Squares and up at the coffee shop, oh God, across from Elm, Elm Tavern or whatever, I'm a regular there. And I, I just think that we need to be more personable and more hands-on and humane. And I'll end with how far you go in life depends on being tender with the young, compassionate with the age, sympathetic with striving and tolerant of the weak and strong because someday in your life you will be or have been all of these. By George Washington Carver. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll look for you at daily dose.
That's it.
Ms. Christie Janigo.
I intend to best serve the city by listening to residents and local business owners. One of the largest parts of my campaign has been calling thousands of residents to understand what issues are important to them. I have enjoyed these conversations and I have gained greatly from the personal connections I've experienced with neighbors. I will also use my voice to lift the voices of those who might not be heard. I want to see our city move forward as a diverse, sustainable, accessible, and vibrant community now and into the future. For me, that means capitalizing on what has already been done and also fostering greater inclusivity so that all residents can experience the benefits of this amazing community to its fullest. I think that can be done through engaging the community and local government, increasing housing accessibility and affordability, driving additional work options in our city, and ensuring public safety for all. I'm Christie Janigo. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hawania Hopson.
I don't necessarily have all the answers and I won't try to act as if I do. But what I can guarantee to bring to the city is a different viewpoint. I want to represent the city in a way that Maple Grove has not been represented. We are a growing city and we need our council to look like our city. And so one thing that I can guarantee is that I can bring a different perspective. I am also a people person. Everyone has different ideas and that doesn't mean any one idea is right or wrong. But what it does mean is we have to listen to each other. And by listening and hearing a different perspective, we can continue to keep Maple Grove a flourishing community as it is. Thank you and vote for Hawania.
Ms. Judy Hanson.
I will continue to do the work that it takes to be a good council member. Doing my homework to understand the issues that are presented, making informed decisions that are the best for Maple Grove residents. I will respond to residents' concerns by listening, learning, and engaging. Making good hiring decisions for those who lead our city departments, making sure they get the necessary training to represent the high standards that Maple Grove has, including succession planning, expecting and insisting on high-quality development with adequate infrastructure to support it. Working with our community on re-imaging our public health and public safety response, training, educating, access to appropriate resources. Finally, preserving our natural resources, lakes, open spaces, parks, and trail systems that make Maple Grove such a beautiful place to live.
Thank you. And before I direct, Ms. Barnett, reminder that Karina Jaisaria is also running, but she was home ill with her whole family and we wish them the best. And reach out and get to know her. I'm sure she's got wonderful things to say about Maple Grove. Our final speaker will be Ms. Christie Barnett.
It has been an honor representing you the last four years. I am a fiscal conservative. I'm focused on economic development and a big supporter of public safety. I believe in mindful development and preserving our natural resources. I'm a relationship, relationship builder and because of that, I'm service-oriented. I'm always meeting with residents, staff, community groups, businesses, and other local elected officials that represent Maple Grove and the surrounding areas. Those relationships allow me to determine our needs and how to find solutions. That is why I have the support of many for my reelection efforts by staff, police officers, and firefighters. I've been recommended or endorsed by the mayor, the chair of the Planning Commission, a park board member, an Arbor Committee member, the school board members, and other candidates that are up for reelection this year. Maple Grove doesn't need to change. It just needs good, strong leadership to lead the course and I will provide that leadership. My name is Christie Barnett and I'm asking for your vote on November 3rd. Thank you.
Once again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters and the Twin West Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank the candidates for agreeing to participate in tonight's forum. I would also like to thank the voters for viewing and participating by submitting excellent questions. And I would also really like to thank our friends at CCX Media for their continued support of the League of Women Voters and our shared mission to provide nonpartisan forums for voters to get to know the people who wish to represent them. Remember that if we could not get to your questions tonight, or if you have further questions for the candidates, we invite you to contact them directly with your concerns. Reminder, you get to vote for two of these amazing six women who are vying for your vote and represent Maple Grove. Please remember to get out and vote on or before November 3rd as your vote truly counts. Thank you. Have a good evening and stay safe.